Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the February 12, 2025, regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Valerie, would you please do a roll call?
Here. Here. Benjamin Lasky.
Here.
Samantha Verger.
Here.
Last one, Nina Puccio.
Here.
Robert C. Allen Jr.
Here.
Jerome Valenti. Please note the fire rises in the front and back of the room.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have contractual and student matters to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the February 12, 2025, regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Valerie, would you please do a roll call?
Here. Here. Benjamin Lasky.
Here.
Samantha Verger.
Here.
Last one, Nina Puccio.
Here.
Robert C. Allen Jr.
Here.
Jerome Valenti. Please note the fire rises in the front and back of the room.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have one set of minutes from the January 22, 2025, business meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. At this time, if any member of the public would like to address the Board of Education, you may do so by approaching the podium, and please state your first and last name
Hi, my name is Teresa Norton Fisher. You can call me Tracy. I have a son, William, who is in first grade at Purchase, and a daughter, Rose, who will be a kindergartner there next year. So I am coming on behalf of several other concerned moms in the community in asking this board why we have not yet heard a statement in regards to how they are going to protect our kids, and especially the most vulnerable kids in this community, from the recent administrative actions of our president. We are particularly concerned about, obviously, immigrant communities and the LGBTQ+ community, and particularly kids who identify as trans or who have LGBTQ+ family or who have immigrant families. There is guidance from the New York State, from Kathy Holchel's office, as well as the State Attorney General Letitia James. I have a copy of the guidance as I have read it, I think written at January 2025 is the date on this, stating that ICE is not supposed to be allowed into schools, and that there are very specific criteria in which ICE would be allowed, access to student information. I wanted to just kind of, you know, get a sense from the board as to why there has been silence, and to say that for many of us in the community, the silence speaks a lot more than any statement you could possibly put out. We understand that there's probably a lot of confusion, and probably some people who are even scared about what kind of, you know, lashback they might have for making a statement, but many other districts, including one in Connecticut, which I did forward to Dr. Wolf, have made providing access to information and resources, as well as asking parents to make sure that their emergency contacts are up to date in the situation where perhaps a parent was taken into custody and you had to deliver that child to a safe adult. I haven't seen no such communication from the board at this time, so I am very hopeful, and I plead with the board today, to take a stand, make, you know, we have our equity, access, adaptability, and rigor is right there, and it's very easy to say equity when that word is not under attack. So I ask that we kind of stand behind the mission of this district in providing that, and ask that to know that does this board believe that every student has a right to an education regardless of their immigration status? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just so you understand the protocol, I'm not sure if you've attended
previous board meetings, the superintendent will respond during his update. Okay, it doesn't appear that we have any further public participation?
Hi.
Oh, please.
Hi. I'm just gonna change the subject for a second. I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that I was here yesterday, or last night, I'm sorry, for fifth grade orientation, of sixth grade orientation. My god, I need to think about that a little bit. Clearly, I'm not there yet, as you can tell. So I'm Michelle Loia Kono, I have a fifth grader at Purchase and a third grader at Purchase, and it was my first experience as a first-time mom going into the middle school, and I just wanted to say that Dr. Freed and Dr. Price and the head of counseling and all of their team just did a really wonderful job of kind of welcoming us and giving us a really great idea of what's going to happen, and I think a lot of parents were really comforted. I come from working in a middle school, and as much as I thought that I'd be okay with my daughter going to middle school, when the tables are turned, I'm not really in that same feeling. So I just wanted to say that it was really thorough, it was really informative, there were also just provided links and things to look into, and the welcoming nature of something like that was really important. So Harrison does a really great job, and I think that my daughter and the rest of the fifth graders, as I've heard from other middle school parents and parents of older kids, just say that there's a continuous effort through the rest of this year, as it was explained by Mr. Freed, and we're just really excited about it. So I wanted to just throw that out there, and then the other thing I wanted to throw out there was that a lot of the PTAs in our community, and speaking on the behalf of the PTA, Dr. Kanter and Veronica Andrea, they came to our school and they provided us with this really great workshop in order to kind of get us all going and pretend that we were students, so we can get a feel of what PYP is for our kids in our school, and then how it's going to continue through the years. And it was a really, it was a little stressful, I'm not gonna lie, being put back as a kid, but they really honed in on everything that has to do with IB, and all of which we're trying to focus on as the Harrison School District, and I think that it was a really valuable experience, and it just kind of, I don't know, personalized the connection between us and administrators, just knowing that they were talking at our level with us, and really feeling us, and I think that that's something that Harrison does a really good job with, is just making it a place where we feel like we can communicate and really talk about our stuff, and not feel like we're just the parents and you guys are talking to us, you kind of talk with us. So those are my two things. Thank you.
Thank you for communicating.
This is such a short walk in comparison. I don't like it, but I like it. My name is Filomena Bruci. I have an eighth grader and twin girls in fifth grade going into sixth grade. This room is gorgeous, it's beautiful, it's my first time in the room. I've only seen it from the outside, and I'm blown away, I can't believe that this came together so quickly, and it's beautiful, really, really gorgeous. I have been in the district for, going on, nine years, and my husband and I have lived here for 15 years, and when my grandparents came here from Italy, they moved to Garden Road in Sunny Ridge, and they've lived there since last year, when my grandmother sold her house. So we've been in Harrison for quite a while, and I can speak for myself, being part of this district, that this is my kids' safe place, and I might get emotional. Last month, my family suffered a loss. We lost my cousin's 12-year-old son, and we took our kids to the funeral mass, and we went to church, we prayed, the plan was to go to church, and then go to the cemetery. And we walked out of mass, my son said, "I'm not going to the cemetery," and I said, "Okay, that's fine," and he said, "Take me to school." And I said to him, "You can't go to school, you don't have a backpack, you don't have your Chromebook, you don't have a water bottle," which, to me, the water bottle is really important, that I said that, and I said to him, "You can't go, you have nothing, I called you out of school," and he said, "Just take me to school. I have a pull-up, a pullover in the trunk, take me to school, I need to go to school, I need to be with my friends, I need to be with my teachers." And I dropped him off at school, and school is not just my son's safe space, but I know that it's my daughter's safe space, it's my kid's safe space, their friend's safe space, I know that the district will do everything to keep all of our children safe, every single one of them, and I have faith, especially in Ms. Knowles at Harrison Avenue, who doesn't let you in, and she's known me for quite a long time. All joking aside, I know that there is equity in this entire district, I know that all means all, and every child will be safe and educated and loved, and that's the most important thing, that all of our children feel so loved, and we just, my family just suffered something, and we went through something so tragic, and when we walked out of mass, my son's first response was, "Take me to school." So I think that that speaks volumes for our district, for educators, for his peers, for everyone in the buildings, and I couldn't be prouder to be here tonight. I came to listen to the budget meeting, and now I'm crying. Thank you for keeping all of our children safe and loving them like they're your own, because my son really needed to be here that day, and thank you.
Is that one of the students that we have? All right, one last good cop. Any further public participation? Okay, so moving on to some good news. We have a couple students here, and is it on?
Microphone.
It's on. Is that good? Let me turn it on and off, because it was on.
We just complimented the room.
Better? I think because he's videoing, is that better?
Yeah.
Are we good? You can hear me, right?
I can hear yours.
Here.
Should I share? Okay. I'll turn mine off. Okay. So moving on, I was saying that we have a couple students here, and we're gonna move on to that in just a moment, because that is the highlight of our evening, but a couple other highlights for this evening, we have some of our Harrison High School students who were combined with a 16 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, and in their 102nd year, the Scholastic Awards celebrate excellence in art and writing at the high school level, and thanks to our Harrison High School art team, Ms. Rowe, Ms. Vitarelo, and Ms. Palefsky winning the Gold Key Level, Priya Khaji for photography titled "Caving In," and Melanie Lambana for printmaking, and her title was "Innocence and Hope," so congratulations to our Scholastic Art Award winners. Okay, thank you so much. Speaking of what Michelle was communicating about, we are currently in the transition phase, so we had Mr. Freed, the LMK principal, and a team of school counselors and current sixth-grade students who just went through their transition last year, attended all four elementary schools over the last few weeks, and they each take a few students from each elementary school to attend and showcase their experiences that they've had in the last six months of school, and they visit each elementary school, and it's just one of these touchpoints. We always like to say that there are no accidents here in the district, and that we are so thoughtful in our planning, and everything happens for a reason, and it's one of our ways of welcoming and helping that fifth graders transition into the new experience moving up to LMK. So we're very excited for next year. It's always very exciting for the kids to experience and meet Mr. Freed and the guidance counselors. Our Harrison High School debate team won the Penn Barry Tournament in Pennsylvania, they're always on my update, these amazing debaters. Jonita Ismajlukraj, I hope I'm saying that correctly and not butchering, was the novice champion and second speaker, and Paige Mankini was the top speaker in fifth place. This is the team's 13 tournament win this season. They also had an outstanding performance at Emory University's National Championship. Out of 146 debaters from around the country, Reese Potash, here tonight, placed ninth, earned her fifth bid to the Tournament of Champions, and was second speaker. Jack Borman earned his eighth bid to the TOC, and Jack Gessner placed in the top 25, so congratulations to our ever-wonderful debaters. Moving on to athletics, we had recently had three college commitments. Joe Croupy on his official commitment, he just signed to play football at Ithaca College. Arton Baldemage on his commitment to play football at the Rhode Island University, and also congratulations to Jacob Marriott on his commitment to play baseball at NYU. Our girls' basketball team, huge congratulations to Mia Strazza, she has now become the Huskies' all-time leading scorer with 1,458 points and counting, because the season is not over yet. They just defeated Eastchester 50 to 36, and Mia Strazza was the leading scorer with 27 points, so she's now going down in history. The Harrison Varsity Boys Basketball Team defeated Newburgh Free Academy 56 to 35 and Eastchester 65 to 49. We just had senior night on February 1st at the high school, where they defeated Somers 63 to 43. Moving on to wrestling.
Did you hear that, Mr. Whipple? We beat Somers.
I almost just said that, but I didn't, at least in one sport.
Yeah, one sport.
One sport. They beat us in foot, his kids go to Somers, and they beat us in the football championship playoffs, quarterfinals.
Although we gave them a really good game, couldn't end there.
They beat everybody in football.
They beat everybody in football. Well, we beat you in basketball. Okay, so moving on to wrestling, we had several of our students, well, athletes, competing at the Westchester County Wrestling Championships on Saturday, January 25, and Lorenzo Gunzer won the championship at 190 pounds. Our cheerleaders just took second place at the Westchester County Center Cheerleading Invitational, all down in Orlando, and that's a big competition. They've done really well the last bunch of years.
They've done a good season this year, too.
Yeah. Congratulations to these girls. And our swim team, the Huskies finished the regular season just last Saturday by placing second at the league championships. They were 10-1 on the season, and we have six swimmers continuing into the postseason, so best of luck, and we will be waiting to hear how you guys all compete. The Titans, which is our varsity hockey team, defeated Horace Greeley 7 to 5 for the league championship two years in a row, and congratulations to junior Julian Gar on reaching 100-point milestone.
As a junior.
As a junior, yeah, so 100 points and counting.
May I can speak to that?
Yes. I also just want to say a reminder that on Friday is the last day of school, and February break starts on February 17 for President's Day, and we will be off all week through the 21st, so I hope everyone has a much-needed little break during this winter season, and enjoy your winter recess. And Dr. Wolf, I will pass it.
Back to me.
Actually pass it back over to you.
Thank you. Okay, before we get into the more joyous part of the night, let me address some of the more painful questions. Those of you that know me well know that I don't do what other people do because they do it. I do what I think is right, and what is going to do most to do what I think is the most important thing, which is actually take care of kids, not talk about taking care of them, but actually take care of them. I have a dual responsibility as the superintendent of schools here. The first, which is the most sacred, is to make sure that I do everything in my power to protect every child that crosses the threshold. As soon as your kids cross over, whether you're aware of this or not, we act in loco parentis. That means if we can't get in touch with you and your child needs surgery, it's going to be upon the responsibility of an administrator to make that decision. We make those kinds of decisions every day. It is irrelevant to me who's in the White House. I've been here for a quarter century. The behavior of any president, whether you agree with them or disagree with them, has nothing to do with the way I make decisions. We are a very principled organization. We found every decision that we make upon principle. I'm not performative, I'm purposeful, and so it's very clear to me that some folks have a misunderstanding of how we do business, so let me explain it to you clearly. Every tool that I have available to me to protect children is utilized, was always utilized, will continue to be utilized. There's guidance coming from everybody in the universe, most of it is wrong. Most of it is making a bunch of assumptions that no one's reached a real conclusion about. I have spent literally six to eight hours with attorneys and our administrative team to be prepared to make certain that we are always acting in the best interest of every child, but the one thing we will never do is choose which laws we enforce. I swear an oath to the Constitution of this state and to the Constitution of the United States. I don't always like the law, but I'll always enforce the law. But if anybody thinks for a moment that we haven't been paying attention, I don't know what district you're in. This is a district that has predicated and has built its quite prestigious reputation on the idea that we do things that no one else does. No one else does. We pay for every child's high school examinations, IB, AP, that's a real commitment to equity, not a performative commitment to equity. We make certain that every child knows from the moment they enter this school district that they matter, that they have inherent worth because they're here. It doesn't matter how ready they are for school, equity for us is not a new idea. I wasn't waiting for a memo from the State Education Department to tell me it was a good idea to take care of everybody's kids. It's the premise of everything we do, everything we do. Do you know why the IB is studying us? Because we're one of the highest-performing IB high schools in the world. Do you know what is the mystery? Everybody gets to participate with no prerequisite, so the idea that some kids will drag you down has been disproven here for over 20 years. So the question of what am I going to do if somebody shows up and asks if they can see your children, whether they're a government official or not, I'm going to adhere explicitly to the rules. We know those rules. Some of you may think you know those rules, those rules are fluid at the moment. It used to be that a judicial warrant was necessary for ICE to enter a school district. We have opinions that say that's no longer the case, they may enter, they may ask questions. We know what those questions are, we know what those answers are. Never for a moment think, because you don't get a note from me, that we're not paying attention to the well-being of every child. There have been many presidents since I've been here. I didn't agree with race to the top, which was President Obama's agenda. It didn't change the way we behave. We are not governed by whim, we are governed by principle. The principle's really simple. Every child has an equal opportunity to succeed, and every child will be protected to the best of our ability within the context of the law. End of sentence. There'll be no memo. Please know that, because those children were as safe yesterday as they are today. Somebody else may be in the White House, but it hasn't changed the way we operate. And if I seem a bit angry, it's because sometimes we are victimized by the rather reckless behavior of some surrounding school districts that make pronouncements that frankly can't be enforced. I'm never going to make you a promise I can't keep. The promise I can make you is everything that I can do to keep every child safe will be done. Now, having said that, let me talk about keeping some children safe, because probably the thing that frustrates me most is the idea of what does it mean to be safe? What does it mean to be safe? Sometimes Mr. Freed, who is, I adore, I think he's one of the finest principals I've ever seen, I've heard people say to him, "There should be no bullying in schools," we would all agree with that. This is the real world. The work of school is to teach children how to see and respect one another. Should I take their cell phones away? That's another new idea. It's all the same thing. The work of the International Baccalaureate Program is to teach kids to think critically, that's number one. You know what the other thing is? To see and understand the person in front of you, to listen with an open heart and an open mind. That's what makes kids feel safe when they see each other. I wish that I could control the big world outside, don't have that ability, but I can help create children who are better prepared to do the important work of making the world a better place. You go into our schools, I think you'll see children feeling welcome, children feeling safe, children feeling seen, of all types. If you were here last week, you would have heard a celebration of our ENL population and their extraordinary academic performance. We just did a study of the tri-states, with the tri-states consortium, about co-teaching in our district for special education students and ENL kids. You know what it showed? Their performance actually lifts the rest of us. So while the rest of the world has their ideas of what we should do, I'm going to remind you, I'm not interested in performance, I'm interested in purpose and principle, in actually enacting the kinds of things that make a difference, not talking about them. Now let's get to the celebration. So Mary, how are you?
Good.
Good, would you come to the podium? You're the perfect introduction to a budget presentation. Last year, we had to add a position to support the ever-burgaining science research program. It's so successful, more and more kids want to do it, and Mary agreed to pick up some of the load that Mrs. Blunt has carried on her amazing shoulders for so many years. Tonight, Mary's here to talk a little bit about two folks who did just extraordinarily well in very rigorous circumstances and did some amazing work. I hope we're going to get to hear a little bit about it, and we're excited to have you, so welcome. Introduce yourself.
So I'm Mary Blount. I'm a teacher at Harrison High School, I teach biology, and this year I'm excited to join the science research program with Allison Blunt. And tonight, we're here to celebrate, like Dr. Wolf said, two of our students who have accomplished really remarkable things so far this year, and then they're going to share their projects with you or a little bit about their projects. So Reese Potash is a senior in the science research program, so she's been doing her study for three years, and Reese was named a Regeneron Science Talent Search Scholar for this year, which means that she placed in the top 300 in the country. And the top 300 represent 39 schools across 16 states, and she was selected from nearly 2,500 total entrants, their research projects spanning a wide range of critical topics, reflecting their expertise and commitment to solving some of society's most important challenges. So Reese was one of the 24 students at Harrison to apply, and one of only 17 students in Westchester County who actually qualified as, or achieved, the Science Talent Search Scholar title, and she, in And she, in winning that title, won $2,000 for herself and for the school. So Reese is going to share a little bit about what her project was about.
I hope there's no quiz after this, I was just going to say. And I've been following Harrison commits. You want to tell us? I think you made a decision.
Oh, yeah. Hi, my name's Reese Potash. To answer a question I just committed via early decision to Duke University for next year.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, so my study was about the relationship between adverse childhood experiences, juvenile offending, and the role of school engagement in interrupting that relationship. So basically, what my study identified is whether students who have experienced childhood trauma in their past and are at a greater risk of becoming a juvenile offender can engage in school as a way of interrupting that relationship. So past studies and in a review of literature have found that people with childhood trauma are at a greater risk of committing juvenile delinquency. But my study identified whether or not school attachments, like having relationships with your faculty members, engaging in extracurriculars, school attendance, committing your assignments, or completing your assignments, rather, can interrupt that relationship. So what I did is I contacted a University of Florida professor, Brianna Fox, and she introduced me to the Pathways to Desistance Study, which is the last government-sponsored longitudinal analysis of juvenile offenders. And from there, I interviewed, or they interviewed, and I used that data. Multiple juvenile offenders talking about their childhood experiences. So adverse childhood experiences are things like sexual abuse, physical trauma, emotional neglect, having a parent who's incarcerated or in a mental hospital, et cetera. And through this research, I found there's a significant relationship between school engagement being, like, ability to interrupt the bond that currently exists between individuals who have childhood trauma and become juvenile offenders. And so this research I got interested in because I've always been interested in the intersection between psychology and criminal justice, and I want to be a lawyer in the future who studies that intersection. And so I thought that this study was a useful way of interrogating that. And I think that this can sort of impact how we engage in school programs in the future by demonstrating the importance of having school programs created for these individuals who experience childhood trauma to sort of deter them from becoming juvenile offenders in the future. Thank you.
And she's one of our top debaters that are always in my updating. Can you tell the way that she speaks and presents? She's talking so fast because she's...
Sorry.
No, you're amazing. It's actually so impressive. But she goes right into that debate mode.
I want you to go back, though, to the beginning, because I thought that's what captured me, this concept of attachment. Talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, for sure. Something that I think is relevant here that my research also found is that school attachment isn't necessarily academic performance. So something that's important in attachment is, for example, like being in extracurriculars, having relationships with your friends, but also teachers, going to class in the first place. And through my research, I found that it doesn't really matter whether or not you get an A on an assignment or a D. It really matters whether or not you actually care about the work you're completing. And so in my study, I specifically looked at different types of crime, different types of academic attachment. And I found, like I said, that it's not related to performance. It's not related to what you get on the test, but whether or not you actually cared enough to take it. And so that shows that when we think about how to improve schooling programs, it's not necessarily about improving grades, but rather ensuring that children feel comfortable engaging in extracurriculars or having conversations with their teachers.
You know, I just, if I could put a halo over your head right now, I would. Because that is exactly, in some ways, the story that Mrs. Bruschi was telling. That when a child feels safe in school, it's the place they want to be, and the learning becomes a part of something they want to do. And we tend, and your study, I think, shows this, go in the wrong door. Positive attitudes about self before anything happens about learning. And when you create a culture where school feels safe, kids do amazing things. I think one of the secrets, and I'm looking at Principal Bukema, and she knows I feel this way, that Harrison High School is such an extraordinary place. It's not just that we have open access, it's that we have an environment where kids feel safe. I get psyched about these studies, but this particular study, Reese, sent me to the moon, so thank you.
He talks about this all the time, about kids being engaged. That's the key factor to success.
And now we have one of our geniuses proving it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations on everything else. We love the baby picture, by the way. I don't know who picked it. Mom, did you pick that picture?
All right. And the second student we're here celebrating tonight is Chase Endy. So Chase is a National STEM Festival STEM champion for 2025.
I think our first ever.
Yes. It's a fairly... So the National STEM Festival celebrates the exceptional talents of our nation's youth and the innovative businesses driving progress all year round. Their mission is to guide bright minds toward careers in STEM and to tackle the world's most pressing challenges. So STEM, sorry, Chase also applied in a pool of applicants of over 2,500, and he was one of 106 who were selected across the United States and some other territories. And what he won was a full-expense-paid trip to Washington DC for a week with him and a guardian. And he's going to meet with scientists and industry leaders to discuss his innovative research. So let Chase tell you a little bit more about his project.
Thank you. Can't wait for this. Come on.
Hi, my name is Chase, and my project was creating a computer program to computationally generate drug molecules that have higher binding affinity than natural ligands to that same receptor. And just for context, ligands are just molecules that interact with receptor proteins in the body. So I chose this project because, for two main reasons. One was a personal reason, and the second was because I found the concept really interesting and cool.
That's a good reason.
So what I found was that my program always generated drug molecules with higher binding affinity for a target receptor than that receptor's natural ligand, showing that my program actually works. So the implications of this is that it can optimize existing drug molecules, it can create new drug molecules to target any membrane-bound receptor in the body, it can reduce drug costs by reducing, like, require wet lab experimentation, and finally, it can improve patient experiences by reducing side effects through more specificity and conformity in drug molecule structure. Thank you.
I'd like to pretend I have an intelligent question. I did hear, so reducing drug costs how? Because it improves the ability to determine which is the most effective?
Yeah, so currently, scientists will do, like, manual testing in labs and just, like, do a brute force tactic and keep trying drug molecules until you get, like, a best-fit or best-performing molecule. So what my program does is it just jumps straight to the point of generating the molecule that we know will fit and bind most strong to the receptor. And then future research would probably consist of doing, like, a computational simulation to further cut down on that physical experimentation aspect.
That's...
Brilliant.
It's beyond brilliant. It's going to change lives. It's going to actually impact the well-being of people that are facing incredible illness. And I'm not being silly here. I hope it's copyrighted and patented already.
I got one patent last year.
All right.
Oh, you did?
Thank you. Congratulations. We're so proud. And you have a year to go, don't you? Okay, good. You're sticking around. Well, Mary, thank you. That was amazing. Congratulations to our students.
And their parents, yes.
And their parents, of course. And because you work so hard and you're such serious students, we won't feel badly if you leave to go home, so we continue our meeting.
Yes, you should go home.
Unless you want to stay for the budget presentation, you're more than welcome to.
Thank you guys for coming. Congratulations.
Great job. Yeah, it was a pleasure.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Ms. Bukema, for also for being here. Our principal, another night out. We have cheap seats up front if you want to move up. All right, so we're going to... We're going to do our budget presentation. This is our first budget presentation, but I'm going to turn it over to the chair of the Budget Committee.
No, we're turning it right over to Mr. Whipple.
He's turning it right back to me, so we're just going to pass it around the room here. All right, hi, everybody. So this is the superintendent's attempt to try to narrate, and we will be relatively concise tonight, where we are in the budget process. We have a series of budget meetings coming up, but let's get right to work. Just for those of you that are new, I'm going to try to be concise, but some people at home may have never heard this before. So our challenge is very daunting as a school district. We don't necessarily get to determine what we need and how much we spend. There's a formula that many people are already well-familiar with called the tax levy cap, and we must work within that formula and its limits. And we can't go over it unless we override the amount we're allowed to levy. That's a big challenge in Harrison right now, because, as you know, we have a growing enrollment. Dr. Leydig will give you a, sort of a teaser of what's ahead. But I can tell you, I've looked at the preliminary results of our new demographic study, and it is shocking. It's absolutely shocking. It's like having cold water poured all over you. I thought the numbers would be compelling. They're shocking. Our problem is, so we have this wonderful program. We want to sustain it. In some cases, we want to grow it, but we can't. We had a wonderful rollout of our elementary world language program this year. Unfortunately, I can tell you already, Phase 2 will have to be delayed just to meet the basic needs of program, class sizes, special education, health insurance. You'll hear more about that later. So we're always struggling with how do we develop a plan within this very tight framework? Next slide, please, Tim, or who's ever driving the bus there. So our vision is always the same. We try to remember that everybody's child is unique and that equity and access mean very different things here. Not everybody gets the same thing. Everybody gets what they need. And that is a different kind of definition for equity. Maybe your child struggles in mathematics and they need some academic support. They'll get that support. Maybe they need a co-teacher. They'll get that support. Maybe your child doesn't need any of those things, and they're just going to zoom right through. So we always try to remember that each of your children is different. The secret sauce here, though, to me, and we just had maybe the most successful superintendent's conference day I've seen in any district anywhere, ever. And I say that because of the incredible planning and the detail and the high level of engagement that I saw across the K-12 spectrum. Much of it, all of it, led by our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Mohol, but led by teachers, designed by teachers, working hand-in-hand with administrative colleagues. It was incredibly powerful. But if you don't stay focused on training your faculty, all your dreams will never come true. Because in my mind, the single most important thing is the quality of the teacher in front of the child. We've been working diligently. My vision for this school district before I leave is that it will be completely aligned, kindergarten through 12th grade, have a coherent instructional language, and a coherent approach to the way we design and plan, the way we assess from multiple measures. And that is an ongoing process. And of course, we want to complete, and we anticipate that by the end of this year, we will be the first district in Westchester County to say that we are an international baccalaureate school district, kindergarten through 12th grade. And we'll be able to achieve that even without implementing the second phase of the world language program. And it's interesting to note, based on the commentary I made earlier, the idea of caring for all kids is not new to us. And the IB philosophy is one that I think really reinforces what this board believes. We never teach children what to think, we teach them how to think. The only thing we ask of every child that goes to school here is be humane, be caring, see the person sitting next to you, whether they're like you or not. And it's okay to listen to people who may have a different perspective or a different cultural experience. All of our learning is predicated on those ideas. I know that is not new to the people sitting in front of me tonight. Some programmatic priorities, continuous improvement. We can't stay good if we don't keep looking at what we're doing. We just did a major study. We were so delighted with the results of the tri-state consortium examination of our K-12 co-teaching model. What did we find? Co-teaching actually helps the general education student and the special needs student, the general education student and the ENL student. But we wouldn't know that if we didn't study it, so we always spend time studying. We're always working, looking at data to say, where are the learning gaps for kids? Where can we be more effective? Where are we? The best example I can think of that is we get these ridiculously great results on our IB math assessments. And this year, I went into a superintendent's conference day workshop led by Mrs. Dondrea, and they were looking at all of the questions that every child got wrong, trying to figure out, is there something we're not teaching that can get these kids from a six to a seven? And here's the funny story. They found that IB's answers were wrong, and they had to appeal to have the grades changed on many of the exams because they had done such a deep dive, they found mistakes in IB's thinking. So our continuous improvement plan sometimes benefits everybody. In that case, kids and the IB. But I think the most important thing about data is we never compare one child to another because growth for one child is not the same for another. My two girls are as different as day and night. And if I were trying to assess them on the same measures, they would look very different. I'd be doing this. What we want to find is ways to assess how much a child is growing, which is far more important than how they scored on a test. Is their growth what we expected? And we're always trying to determine how much growth is enough growth for your child. So that's what the budget process is about, to me. It's not about numbers, although I have to force myself to focus on numbers even when I don't want to. Okay, so here's where we are. Next slide, please. We've met with every single administrator in the district. We've talked about their needs. We've tried to determine... I'm going to kill whoever did this front and back. This is so freaking annoying. Let's get rid of it.
It's saving paper.
Yeah, not a good idea. This is what we budgeted for last year before we completed the budget cycle we're in. Those first two bullets indicate what we had to add before school opened. Because enrollment grew, we added 1.7 elementary positions and a teaching assistant. Part of that was special education. One was another new section. This is what we are projecting right now, and I need to say to everybody listening at home, we're in February. This could change dramatically in the next six weeks. We don't know who's going to be enrolling in our schools, but this is the best available data we have right now. And I think the total is 7.1 FTEs. You can see it's part speech, part psychologist. When you see the .2s for music and PE, that means that, I think these are probably Harrison Avenue numbers, when the sections grow so big, we can't cover music and art with the existing personnel. So we have to bring in parts of another teacher to cover those things. In addition, we have two, already that we know of, elementary positions that will be new to the budget due to enrollment growth, one teaching assistant. And this is the one area where I've asked the board to give in a little bit and find a way to fund these two positions. We're building this new fitness center. Mr. Fish has been extraordinarily successful in building almost a cult of wellness at the high school. We have children who are not connected to athletics in any way, shape, or form who show up every day to participate in the fitness center. I'm here at the middle school. I see kids from the middle school getting on a bus at the end of the day and going up to the high school to participate in the fitness center. So while these are modest increases, two stipends, neighborhood of $7,000 each, it will allow us to keep the fitness center open and more available for additional time. The good news is we're building a new fitness center. It will accommodate, we hope, the growing enrollment. But wellness is not something that you teach kids late in life. You teach them early. And we want to give them as many opportunities to use that fitness center as we can. So there's not a lot new in here. You don't see, for example, two additional world language teachers, only because, at this point, we don't have enough money in the formula to fund those. So these meet the basic needs. This is a budget that sustains what we have to the extent, and with some, a little bit of sprinkling here and there, gives us some hope of keeping the fitness center viable as we go forward with its construction. Next slide, please. Now, we have been really busy. I'm going to turn it over to Tim. He's been really very vigilant in making sure that these projects have reached fruition. I will jump in and out and talk about some of the significance of some of these things. But some of this you'll hear about is bond, and some of it is within our budget. And Tim will explain the difference between those.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, we generally have two types of capital projects that we endeavor on. We have our annual, you know, general fund transfer to our... We have our annual, you know, general fund transferred to our capital fund that deals with smaller projects from year to year. And that's what you're seeing right here. We generally allocate about $2 million every year to try to do some major projects that we think we can handle either internally or hire some contractors to help us with. So in the current year, this past summer, we were able to finish the purchase elementary roof replacement. So that building has a completely new roof. And we're very excited and that should last us, you know, more than 20 years. Many, many flooring replacements throughout the district. And the Preston Auditorium had a nice chair and floor renovation that looks spectacular and we're very excited that we were able to accomplish that this past year.
So am I. I don't have to sit on the floor anymore. I would sit so low there. My knees are in my teeth.
In the upcoming year, again, we're going to allocate about $1.9 million to some other projects this year. Again, more classroom gym floor renovations, as many as we can. We have a very old switchgear and electrical breakers at our high school location that are from the early 1970s that are original to the building. This has proved to be a little bit more complicated than we originally thought. So we're inviting some engineers that have a really specialized expertise in this area to help us generate the plans and specifications to hopefully replace that in the upcoming year.
In other words, it's so old, we can't find anybody that would leave and service it.
Exactly. Parsons has a retaining well by the playground that we plan to repair. And we're going to be opening that bid here in the next couple of weeks. So that'll be something this summer that we do. We're always trying to look at ways to be more efficient with our boilers and our heating systems. We do have many boilers that are quite old. So trying to keep up the new technology, replace parts, make them more efficient as best we can is always an objective of ours. And then athletic equipment, you know, we constantly look around the district for the oldest equipment that we have. We have old scoreboards, both in our high school gymnasium and on the football field. Believe it or not, that scoreboard on the football field is almost 20 years old. So we have allocated some funds in the capital budget to deal with those two things for next year. So shifting to the bond, and we wanted to give you just a quick update on where we are with the bond. And Dr. Wool can jump in here, obviously, because he's very familiar with all these too. But the items that we were able to do this past summer while we're waiting for SED approval on many of the other projects, we were able to do some of the low hanging fruit and some of the quicker projects. In terms of security, we have a protective window barrier system and on all ground floor windows throughout the district. We were able to put in additional cameras and improve door access. And we're very excited about an interactive security mapping of classrooms that makes it much more efficient for our security and police partners to be able to identify if there's an issue in one of our buildings, how do you find out exactly where in our building that takes place? So that was one of the improvements we made as well. As you can see, the LMK multipurpose center is complete for the most part. The only thing that really remains is to finish your exterior site work around the external part of this building and also do some masonry. And as soon as the weather breaks and gets a little nicer, we plan to be out there and finish that up. So we're very, very close. And then the purchase playground, obviously you've seen, if you haven't seen, but there's a new basketball court that was relocated to make way for the new addition that will be starting very soon. And we made some nice improvements to the playground as well. And the final stage of that will happen over the April break this year.
Hey, while you're on that, I just want to remind the board and the public that this room that we're in, as Tim said, is almost completely constructed by our in-house maintenance crew, which is incredible. The only thing they didn't do is the foundation, pretty much. They did everything else. And we're going to recognize them at our next board meeting. We're going to do a grand opening and we're going to invite everybody to come and say thank you to these extraordinary people that save us incredible amounts of money, but also create these incredible spaces for kids and adults. So thanks to them.
Okay, so Phase Two is going to be starting very, very soon. And this is a lot of action, for lack of a better word. The purchase classroom and cafeteria addition, we're going to be opening bids on February 25th. Hope to break ground early May, late April for a expected completion of September of 2026. So, you know, it's an aggressive timeline. We think we can, you know, all of our experts and all of our professionals that assist us in terms of our architects and construction managers believe that, you know, a 14, 15-month window is doable. But we want to be able to get in the ground as soon as we can this spring to make sure we hit that September 1st deadline. As Dr. Wool just mentioned, we have our fantastic maintenance crew and they're doing the majority, probably 90% of the work in the Parsons third floor renovation. They've been up there for the past five or six months, making fantastic progress. And again, this is one of the ones that we hope to occupy this September, September of '25, actually. So we're well on our way and we expect to be able to open that with six new classrooms plus an additional room. And that'll make that whole building handicapped accessible and lead to the library that's on that floor as well.
I can't believe that we're able to say that a building built in 1899 is going to be fully handicapped accessible. And again, Tim's mentioned it, but it's worth repeating. I was up there the other day. They've already done all the demolition, all the subfloors are in, the walls are up. The breakthrough is about to come in. They're going to actually create the two new bathrooms on that floor, including a handicapped access bathroom. Just incredible. But Tim, I think it's also worth mentioning that you mentioned the groundbreaking at Purchase. Over the break, we're also going to be removing the portables. Is that right?
Yes, yeah. The existing portables that have been, are not occupied right now to make way for the new addition, those will be removed during the February break. I think you'll see them out of there in a couple of days, starting on Monday of next week, actually. So very excited about that.
We are indeed.
Harrison Ave, just a quick update. We have a lot of work going on. Before we get to the main addition piece of Harrison Ave, we're going to be flip-flopping the main office and some special education classrooms. So we believe that relocating the main office to the ground floor with the addition of a new security vest bill will make, just position that office and the security of that building to be much more safe. So that's on the plan and also to install an accessibility lift to the gym. Again, making that, excuse me, that building almost 100% accessible. I think the gym was one of the last spaces that we weren't able to access. So that's going to be a great addition. Is there anything else I left off there? No, I think that's it. And then Harrison High School, let's just go back one second. Harrison High School, hoping to start the turf field, the multi-purpose turf field that's going to accommodate the baseball and some soccer areas. Hope to start that again in April or May. And that has got a more aggressive timeline. We hope to be, that turf field will be available for play in September of this year. The other ones, the fitness center, the classroom additions, again, those will come very soon thereafter. And with the classroom additions, we plan to open that bid on March 6th. So we're well on our way for four new classrooms at the high school. Harrison High School Parsons window replacement, those are starting right now. We hope to be completed with those in August. The high school will start first and that'll happen, that'll begin next week. I think Phase Three will be the last thing we'll just mention real quick. These are projects that are submitted to the state education department right now for review. And we expect them to be approved sometime, you know, in the late spring, early summer, with bidding and construction to happen in the fall of '25 and then the spring of '26. So with the goal of having everything done by the fall of 2027. Okay? And I'll turn it over to Brian.
Okay, so one of the things that we track very carefully in the district as we plan for program and staffing and space is class size averages. We know that teachers do their best work when they can personalize learning for kids and that means having class sizes that are favorable to be able to do that. So we track these numbers very carefully and we're always mindful when we have new students move into the district. If it's going to create added challenges for us, we try to think about the supports that they're going to need to be successful in class, whether that's additional staffing or adjustments to program. So at the elementary level, we're currently maintaining a class size average of 19.3, which is great. That doesn't mean, of course, it's an average. It doesn't mean every class is 19 students. We have some that are larger, some that are smaller. At the middle school, it's a little bit higher at 22. Partly an artifact of the way we team at the high school and that we have additional instructional time at the high school for the team to use flexibly. But the way it breaks out in terms of our class size numbers shows it at about 22. And that includes all math, science, social studies, English, and world language classes. At the high school, it's 19.5, which is an excellent class size average, one that we're actually quite protective of because we know that, as I said before, that's how we can ensure that students get the really, the most relevant support that they need. So we're conscious of trying to protect those. And as we welcome new students, that becomes a greater challenge, but not one that we're not up to. So this is a new view of some data. We were successful in partnering with the town just recently to get some projections from them about some of the buildings that's going on. And of course, as we've shared before in our prior budget presentations, we think this is actually quite a good news story for the town of Harrison because it means that families are moving to our community. Developers see it as an opportunity to create more housing units. And boy, are we growing. And it's interesting because there's not as much development and certainly it's declining enrollment in most of our neighboring districts. But what we can see is, if we project out based on the data we've received from the town, heading out to 2029, the projection is for an additional 2,231 housing units. And you might think the term unit is a little unusual, but it's inclusive of studio apartments, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, single-family homes, multifamily dwellings attached and detached. So it's an all-inclusive number. This year, there are two, in 2024, just last year, 596 of those units came online. What's noteworthy about the impact on enrollment, if we look back just two years to today, we've seen about 183 more students today than we had two years ago. That's partly an artifact of the new building that's happening, but it's partly also an artifact of housing turnover. Older families who maybe raised children in our community, maybe they downsize, they sell their home to a family that has younger children and then they come to our school. So we try to track those details carefully. It's also noteworthy that the pockets of the new building are really in two of our school catchment zones. One is Parsons. You can see the bottom chart, 329 units slated for development in the Parsons School community. But look at the Purchase community, 1,890 projected new units. Now, those aren't all happening at once, thankfully. It's going to be staged out over some time. And some of these projects are still in the planning and development process with town review. So like I said before, we work carefully with the town to curate this information, to share it with our demographers. And I think at our next meeting, I'll be able to share more details of what the demographers are suggesting this might yield for us in terms of new student enrollment. To just give you a quick snapshot of, well, where are the big projects in town that seem to be accounting for a lot of the building? And I've listed them here. So the first two actually are already completed. The Caraway Project up near Wegmans, which was 421 units, and Avalon right in downtown, which is zoned for Parsons, 143 units. So we're already starting to see some students there. The other projects that you see listed here are the larger projects. Of course, there are many projects that are smaller than these. You can just drive through the community of Harrison and on any street, you can see a single-family home being knocked down and turned into a two or three-family home. And so we're trying to account for that in our projections as well. We're watching some of the out projects, if you will, like, for example, the Renaissance Hotel, which is up on West Red Oak Lane. That is not slated for completion until '27, '28, and '29. But that projects 736 new housing units. All of those would be zoned to the Purchase School. So we can anticipate that not only are we seeing some growth in Purchase now already, but in the coming years, we think that will be quite significant as well. The last data slide that I'll just share tonight in regard to enrollment, one of the things that we also track carefully is the enrollment of school-aged children in the town of Harrison who attend private schools. And what we've seen over time, even if you can't quite make out the numbers from the screen, you can see the trend line is heading downward. So back in 2013, 14, about 25%, one quarter of the students that lived in Harrison attended private schools. That number this year is down to about 16.5%. Again, we think a good news story in that we draw the inference that families are making the decision to send their children to Harrison High School and to our public schools, you know, middle school and elementary schools because of the quality of the offerings. And so we're really proud of that. But it goes into the way we think about planning for the future and for increases in enrollment. In a future presentation, as I said, we'll have more of the demographic projections for the future years in terms of what that might yield for student enrollment. With that, back to you, Mr. Whipple.
Thank you very much. And I think at this point, we're just going to give the board a high-level sneak peek at some budget indications, right? I mean, a lot of these slides you've seen before and you know the concepts. I just want to focus on a few of the things that we're looking at. The tax levy limit, as you know, is something that we have to comply with based on the New York State statute that happened about a dozen years ago. This is due to the comptroller by March 1st, so this is complete. This is final. We have all of our numbers. We finally have our building aid numbers, which was the last kind of piece that we were waiting for. But the two areas I want to focus on, and you've heard me talk about this before, are the two areas highlighted in blue. You've got the tax-based growth factor, which really is, you know, an indication of the strength of our tax base, right? What's our assessment growth going up every year? And in this case, it's the difference between the 2023 and the 2022 tax rolls that we're really looking at. And this is a number that's calculated by the state of New York Department of Finance and Taxation. And they've indicated that our tax-based growth factor for next year is 1.23%. And that's the highest it's ever been for our particular district. We've seen this go up in the last three years. Last year was 0.93. We anticipated it would be at least 0.9 or above this year and it is. So this is a great news story for us because it recognizes that the growth we're seeing in the community, we're able to use some of the additional tax dollars from the formula to help deal with the enrollment increases that we've seen here. So this will generate about $1.5 million for us next year. The second number that I want to focus on is the other number, which is the allowable CPI growth. And as you know, CPI stands for Consumer Price Index, which is a measure of inflation. And, you know, unfortunately, the way the tax cap formula is set up, we're only able to recognize the lesser of the actual CPI or 2%. So you can see there, the actual CPI for the previous 12 months was 2.95%. So if you remember, two, three years ago, or two years ago, it was 8%. Last year, it dropped to 4. This year, it's 2.95. So you can see inflation kind of softening and going down a little bit. But it still does not help us as much because we're limited by the lesser of the two. So you can see the 2% number there. And, you know, generates $2.4 million. But if, you know, keep in mind that, you know, we're seeing inflationary increases all over the board, transportation, insurance, many other areas that just aren't keeping up with, you know, with this number. So it's a hardship for us. And, but I guess the good sign is that inflation does appear to be softening a little bit. If we go to the next slide. Current year levy is $123.7 million. And just to remind you, the levy is the total amount that we collect from our taxpayers every year to help support our general fund budget. Again, to remind you, our general fund is about $141.5 million. So this represents about 87% of our total revenue that we receive every year. The maximum allowable levy for next year will be $127.5 million. So it's an increase of $3.8 million. So remember that $3.8 million as we get into just a couple of these other slides because it'll start to make sense of some of the challenges that we're facing. So again, just three things that we'll talk about real quickly. The enrollment growth, the executive budget proposal, and then some of the operational increases that we will see for next year. We've already seen this slide. I just want to, I just want to point out that, you know, in calculating these increases, these projected new positions, it's about $650,000 for us next year. So, and this includes the ones that we already have in our budget for this year. So those two, the 2.7 FTEs that, you know, we were forced to add due to enrollment increases, you know, that's a given. That's already got to be generated for next year. But these other ones are not in the budget yet, but are obviously serious considerations for the board to think about and to understand. You know, one of the things that we were paying very close attention to this year was the governor's proposal on state aid. And if you recall from last year, the governor proposed a... And if you recall from last year, the governor proposed a reduction of about 50% of our hold harmless amount. And if, just to remind people, hold harmless is, is the idea that you can't receive less in one year than you did in the previous year. But unfortunately, the proposal last year was to cut our, our aid by about $650,000. And when, when you only receive about $3.5 million in foundation aid, 650 is, is a big percentage. So luckily, in the final budget negotiation with the legislature, you know, we were pleased that the governor and the legislature restored that decrease of save harmless. But the, but the downside was there was no increase. So it was a flat aid year, if you remember last year. And, but the parties also agreed to conduct a study that was going to be done through the Rockefeller Institute to analyze the foundation formula because we all agreed that the formula needed many, many tweaks. It was, it was very old and, and that, and that did occur. So when we received the governor's executive proposal this year, we were very pleased to see that the, you know, the advocacy efforts that we all championed were, were, you know, made it to the governor's proposal. So not only did we receive a small increase this year, but the governor said, you know, we're not going to take away save harmless this year. So we were very pleased about that. She also proposed a 2% increase for all those districts that were on save harmless, which is about 380, 80 districts. All of those districts received a three, a two-point, a 2% increase. For us, that's about $70,000, just for your, your reference. So when you receive the, the final budget, you'll see that, that, that will be the foundation aid increase. A couple of the new concepts that we were, again, excited to see, we were supportive of these, were, were updated poverty measures. And there were two main, specifically two main poverty measures that we, we were very supportive that, that made it into the, into the new formula. One of them was to do away with the 2000 census data, which we, which is 25 years old. And to come up with a new metric, which is called the Small Area Income Estimate, which all experts that, that we interact with believe this is a much better methodology to track, you know, a series of poverty data that we have available to us. I think the other thing that was very positive was to replace the free and reduced lunch count with an economically disadvantaged count. And, you know, if you, if you think that the, the cost of, of living in Westchester and the income levels that we, that it takes to live in this particular area don't coincide with the nationwide income levels. And for, for the state to be using the, the free reduced lunch count was really out of touch with some of the, the meaningful economically disadvantaged numbers that we know we see in this particular community. So again, those were two, two, two great advocacy things that, that were added. Two things that we, we also asked to put in there that were also recommendations from the Rockefeller Institute that didn't make it in, but we believe still, you know, there's, there's an opportunity, are the Regional Cost Index, which kind of measures what's the cost of doing business or the cost of, of educating a child in Westchester compared to other parts of the state. And, you know, if, as you know, we were always lumped in with Putnam County and Rockland County. We believe we were more in line with, with Long Island and New York City in terms of the cost of doing business and, and educating a child. So there are some good recommendations that the Rockefeller Institute made and we, we will urge the governor and the legislature to, to adopt some of those. The last thing I'll mention is, is another advocacy piece for us, is to decouple the special education funding that's currently within the foundation formula and add a separate categorical aid stream along with English-language learners so that, that decouples with the formula and we, we able to really pinpoint the amount that we spend to educate special education students, which, you know, is, is an important part of what we do. And we, we really think that the, that the, the support that the state should be giving us should better align with the actual cost of, of educating all different types of students.
The only thing I would add to what Tim said, and that's a really excellent summary, Tim, of what emerged from the governor's executive budget, was we're really fortunate that our local legislators were so laser-focused last year on slowing her down because she did not actually come to this idea that save harmless should in fact be, remain in force. If it hadn't been for all that lobbying from superintendents and school boards and our local legislators, we would have been in a very different place. And to your point, the study, which I actually thought was an excellent study, she did not come too easily either. It was a last-minute compromise and what we're hopeful is that some of the things that Tim narrated for us can be lobbied for again and maybe we can see some more meaningful change in the not-too-distant future. So in, at the risk of sounding optimistic, if our tax-based growth factor continues to grow and we were to get some of these changes, our ability to manage some of this extraordinary growth will be in a little bit better place.
Agreed. Okay, so finally, as I said, we're, we're in the final stages of budget development. I got to say, the, the amount of support and feedback we've received from all of our instructional professionals here has, has been very, very helpful. Some of these are some of the operational and some of the instructional increases that we see. You know, and this doesn't include any of the, you know, the contractual salary obligations that we have with our bargaining units. This is more kind of operational nature and, and employee benefit costs. But as you know, we have two retirement systems that our employees can participate in. As you see here, one is going to be down about $190,000 and the other will be up about the same. So it's, it's interesting how these kind of diverge from each other. You would think that, you know, based on the fact that they're both, you react based on stock market returns, that they would be similar. But for, for, I guess, any number of reasons and the membership, they're a little bit different. But the good thing is that they're going to offset each other for next year. For transportation, we are in the third year of a four-year agreement with First Student, if you recall. The increase actually will be 5% for, for, based on the contract next year, but we've been able to shift around and be more efficient with some of our transportation runs. And a lot depends on the requests we receive from private parochial schools every year. So that, that, that window is open. And so we, we have identified a run or two that we believe we can be more efficient with and maybe even not, not do next year. So it's a little less than what, than what it could have been. In terms of special education tuition, you know, we're, we're very, very proud of the programs that we offer internally here in Harrison. Every student has, has a program that, that meets their individual needs. However, there are some instances where some of the specialized services that students require, we, we don't have the exact program that would meet their, their needs. So we have kind of three main buckets that, that we, that we have in addition to some of our own programming. You know, we do have some students that, that attend private schools outside of the district. We have some occupational therapy, some physical therapy, and some nursing services that are very individual to, to certain student needs. And we, we partner with other local school districts through BOSI's to offer some programs, again, that we don't have specifically to meet a particular need of a student. So as you can see, those are pretty large increases though for next year. It's over a million dollars. It's, it's quite a bit larger than we've seen in the past few years. So, you know, this is an opportunity for us to really go back, really analyze each situation in more detail and see, you know, are there areas where we can be more efficient or, you know, look to for economies of scale in some way? So that'll be, in the next two or three weeks, we'll be looking to do that. If you followed the news recently, you've seen that ConEd has, has proposed significant rate increases for next year. You know, it seems like I'm a broken record because every year that I've been here, unfortunately, I've had to come to the board and say, you know, our electricity costs are going up next year. And it's really, I, we just, you know, it's, it's hard to imagine, you know, where the end is, but as you can see, there's a significant increase for electricity next year. I'm just trying to keep up with what the current year is, so we're really kind of a year behind here. But that, that's a significant, a significant increase. And then finally, insurance costs across the board have continued to remain in a hard market kind of situation. Health insurance, you know, the past few years, we've been, it's been pretty, pretty reasonable in the low single digits. The last two years, it's, it's been challenging. So that's a significant increase. Medicare premiums are, are reimbursements that we make to some of our retiree population. And then student accident liability insurance continue to be, you know, above the, the normal kind of CPI numbers that we've seen out there. So all in all, if you add just the things up on this particular page, you know, we're in the $3.6 million range, okay? So again, not including any contractual salary increases and not including any of the new positions that we talked about just a few slides ago. So when you go back to the tax cap calculation, we're, we're only able to increase the levy by 3.8 million and just on this page alone, we're at 3.6. And you can kind of see, we, we have, we have a challenge that, in the next few weeks and a couple of months that we have to try to get through, to try to get the budget back into a balanced situation. Final page is just to kind of show you where we're going to go. Our next kind of main budget meeting won't be until March 19th. What we'll talk about more of the projected expenditures, the exact expenditures for the budget. I would like to note that our first Citizens Budget Advisory Committee meeting will be on February 25th in a couple of weeks. It'll be in this room at 7:00. So we welcome the participation of our, of our community members and our partners to help give feedback to the board and our committees on, on the budget process and, and what they're seeing. And again, the, the, the budget vote this year will be, it's always the third Tuesday of the month in May, so it'll be on May 20th. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions or any comments.
I don't have a question, just a statement, but thank you for your hard work within the entire business office. And that was a very thorough review. Even though you said it was going to be just high-level, I thought it was extremely thorough, so thank you.
I'll, I'll just add that the community should know that the, the board and the associations we're involved with are continuing to advocate and work to try and make sure some of the, as Tim referenced, there were some positive things in the Rockefeller Report on Foundation Aid. And we're hoping that, as he said, some of those will actually come to be over the course of the next couple of years. And we're, we, we know that they would have a positive impact on us. So we are working with the School Boards Association and the Lower Hudson Education Council and a, a number of advocacy organizations to try and get some of those changes that would help not only our students, but the taxpayers in our community and neighboring communities.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, we certainly will be back at this several more times. Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Brian. Madam President, back to you.
Okay, moving on to the Personnel Report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, certificated personnel. One, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Two, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. Three, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received. Page four, leave of absence. B, non-certificated personnel. One, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. C, other. One, contract service provider. Two, student, teacher, observer, SED clearance received. Do I have a motion to approve the Personnel Report? Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the Administrative Report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, first reading of policy number 5513, online banking. B, approval of RIC, one, Risk Operations Center to negotiate data privacy agreements with software providers. C, approval of CSC CPSC minutes. D, approval of CSC CPSC recommendations. E, approval of CSC CPSC annual reviews. Do I have a motion to approve the Administrative Report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the Facilities Report, I will take on consent. Finance and Facilities Report, I will take on consent unless anyone. Seeing none. A, approval of agreement, the International Save-A-Life Tour, Education Systems Support Incorporated. B, contract with Purchase College for Harrison High School graduation. C, contract for Health Services, Mamaroneck UFSD. D, contract for Health Services, Irvington UFSD. E, Treasurers Report, January 2025. F, 2024, 25 appropriation transfers. Do I have a motion to approve the Finance and Facilities Report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Our next regularly scheduled business meeting will take place on March 4th, 2025, 7:00 p.m. here at Lewis M. Klein Middle School. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Have a good night. Oh, all, thank you, Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Have a nice vacation.
Have a wonderful vacation. Save trouble.